So it's seven o'clock, we'll get the meeting started, we'll call to order. We'll start with Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Ms. Adgerson?
Here.
Mr. Hall?
Here.
Mr. Ho.
Mr. Marlinson.
How's it?
Here.
Uh, Mr. Nixon?
Here.
And Mr. Conley is here. Recognizer of planning official, Mr. Moore, here this evening. And, um, next we have is, um, a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting. So we have to look at tonight's minute, or, or we have to look at the minutes from the last meeting. And let me know if there's anything we need to do about it. That would have been what, August?
Yeah, we skipped September.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting, August one, twenty twenty-three.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries, we have, uh, we have minutes for August first, two, uh, twenty twenty-three. Next, we need to look at tonight's agenda. Sure that we can live with that before we get going.
I'll make a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Any discussion, or anything we need to look at? Hearing nothing? All in favor of approving tonight's agenda?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? We have an agenda. Um, item six, public comments, those citizens wishing to speak on agenda and non-agenda items will be allowed a maximum of four minutes each to address their concerns. It's the only time during the meeting that citizens are allowed to address the planning commission. Please state your name and address for the record if you would like. Any public comment here tonight? Or do we have any on Zoom? If, if you have a question, I'll be happy to entertain it. Um, that's certainly appropriate for public comment if you want to do that. Uh, we may or may not, I mean, wow, I'm, I'm happy to bend the rules and, and answer because we typically don't answer, have a question to answer this, this time, but if you'd like to come out up and, you don't have to come up if you don't want to, but if you have some questions, we can hear them and, and, uh, and go from there. If it gets too long, um, well, okay.
So, we're, we're planning on building.
I'm sorry. Say your name.
And, uh, I, my fiance are planning on building a, uh, health and wellness spa in Cedar Springs. We were instructed to come here to this, the city, what they think of that, um, being a recreational facility, recreational facility in Cedar Springs. I don't know if it's quite politically the way to say it, but that's kind of just coming out and saying it, yeah.
I mean, in general, uh, we don't, we, we wouldn't normally say, no, we don't like your kind of business, or we do like your kind of business, because in the end, it's, it's our business. It's what, what you would want to do if you think it's viable. And, and that, it's more a question of, would it, the place you've selected for it, would it fit the kind of use that we've set aside for the things that should go there? Do you have a specific place that you're looking at?
We have a rest.
All of the vacant lot.
The vacant house.
But I put a bit on the property, but we wanted to come to the commission and see if it'd be a good idea. Us building there, a health and wellness spa.
Yeah, remember. I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, there's nothing in the code that would stop that, right?
I did talk to probably you a couple of times, and I did refer to, to Mr. Moore, our city planner, had some general discussion.
No, um, so we exchanged some emails on, on this, so it'd be, um, could you, I guess, describe a little bit how operate, and what you have in mind specifically?
Well, it's health and wellness, so when during COVID, I didn't want to come up with this, COVID was the only thing that wasn't shut down because it was sanitary, they had chemicals to kill, you know, and for his idea than mine. I just have the companies to come up here and say, so Tony came up with this great idea, hey, I want to build a health and wellness spa where it's not just a spa like Oasis, but it's more derivative around, you know, educational wellness, you know, uh, massaging, you know, just stuff like that, that you would normally have, like, you know, sort of like at the Y M C A. But local, but here, Cedar Springs, because there's nothing like that. And we're looking for a business to buy, or we're looking for a place to build it that's in Cedar, so we can get, and, you know, and get them involved and help them out, let's.
The business model, like, from an operational perspective, be similar to, like, an Oasis where, because that's a place, right, where people rent number of hours presumably, I don't know.
For special occasions, but there, that's more like a, I would say that'd be more recreational. You want to have, you know, massage tables, you know, like, yeah. For buying are going to be more around, you know, like hot tubs with their, like, this, like, so there are, yeah, I guess if that, which, like,
for, for everybody from being little, so all races of elders, and friends and stuff like that as well, we don't really have anything around it. I'll come here, but we don't want to call it grand access.
So, in interest of time, um, and I don't think you're hearing a lot of people saying, no, don't do it. Uh, I think, uh, your best bet is to work with Darla here. She has a really good idea of what the, what the requirements are, what, what, all of the necessary situations that have to be fulfilled. And then hopefully, you can come up with something that works for you all and bring it up to us, and it'll be easy, and we'll be able to just approve it, and you'll be on your way. Uh, but I'm sure she can definitely, um, work with you to help you see, you know, to, to help you be aware of what all the requirements are.
Yeah, also kind of put together some type of a site plan and what you want to do on that facility site. And that, that helps a lot.
The majority of it's going to, it's just, you know, hot tubs, you know, I wanted to, we wanted to stick.
Water jets.
Yeah. Yeah.
So it's not actually a physical person doing it, it's actually a machine water jets.
With more updated spas, you know, we're talking about maybe five or six spas, if we build it, you know, it's kind of hard to find a building that's going to accommodate that type of plumbing and so we're, we're still in the works with it, you know, we're still working on it. We're just, you know, contracting.
Well, I would say that one thing that's helpful for us is, um, we like having me on the road, makes it easier for us and for you, right? If you guys have, if you're going to build, make sure you go with somebody that's, I think, approved, it'd probably be appropriate to say that has a site plan, has the big thing we always run into is parking lots, is there enough space for the size of the business, and there's enough lighting? Those are the thing, and, and is the entrance the right entrance, and usually that's probably more of a city road commission question. But those are things that we run into, there's sometimes a roadblocks when you guys come in front of us, so I would say, have a good site plan in order, make sure your parking lots in order, make sure you got a good lighting plan and drainage probably, right? I mean, all the things that we look at regularly when people come to us, and we go, well, and we're going to talk signs tonight, but, uh, having an appropriate sign, it works too, yeah.
You definitely have the right idea in mind, sorry, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to go talk over you, you definitely have the right idea in mind to come to the city first. To, so you don't go too far down a path and then find out, oh, that's not going to work. So I think you're at the right place at the right time, and good luck.
All right, everybody, excuse me, I'm going to take off because I can't call this coughing, and I don't want to interrupt him more, okay? Sorry.
I'm going to check again for Zoom before I close the public, for the public comments.
And it looks like he's shaking his head no, so.
Okay, all right, close the public comments, if that's, if we hit everybody. And then, uh, move on to topics of interest, next partake communication. No gasterly deeds on part of the planning commission, good to know. Number eight, schedule public hearings, it looks like there aren't any. We know we're on to nine, site plan reviews. Uh, item A, Strange Roots, uh, forty North Main, uh, marijuana retail application and site plan review. So I think we've seen this before in some incarnation. If you want to catch us up on where we're at with this now?
Of the, uh, plans for this back in July, and I believe everything was fine except for they didn't have a municipal license because the former owner had to bend to that, and then the city would have had to issue them a new one, so I think the person on Zoom calling correctly might be the, the applicant's representation, he might be able to provide a little additional background, but I think that's basically where we're at with this.
Okay, um, I will, I can't see your name from here, I'm sorry, so if, I, I'll recognize you if you'd like to speak.
Hi, good evening, Attorney James McGilly, on behalf of the applicant, Strange Roots LLC, good evening, everybody. Um, so Mr. Mr. Moore's correct, uh, this was initially, um, heard, uh, at the first blush, I suppose, back in July, it was tabled for the reasons stated by Mr. Moore. Uh, Mr. Lucas, the, uh, rid, uh, most recent former operator from this location under Michiganja, R K Agricultural Enterprises. Um, he has now signed and submitted a rescission letter for his local permit to operate a cannabis retailer from this specific location. Um, I believe that, I've certainly seen it sent, um, to the city. Um, is anyone able to confirm receipt on behalf of the city of Mr. Lucas's letter? I believe it was dated yesterday.
I'm, I'm seeing that we have, I'm getting nods that we have received it, yes.
Okay, excellent, um, so I believe that was the, uh, the sticking point, if you will, as far as the city's ability, um, to issue a replacement local license, so that it would be only one, um, existing at any one time. Um, so Mr. Lucas and Michiganja have now rescinded their local license, um, they are, and they will be in the process of transferring assets to my client, um, so that it can basically step into the shoes of Michiganja and continue operations from this location. Um, so the, the interior of the premises will not be altered to any drastic degree, is my understanding. Um, I think the only thing that my client is wishing to do is possibly upgrade or update the siding, um, outside, uh, I believe that he wishes to, uh, sort of replicate the appearance of the brewery across the street. Um, and I just have a follow-up question, when the time permits, of just confirming which permits or applications might be necessary from the city in order to, uh, amend and update the siding on the exterior of the building.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, so, um, I briefly went over your, uh, your July memo on this, and um, as you said, it was, um, pretty much met everything we're looking for, unless, you correct me if I'm wrong on that.
Correct, so it's, it's the same as the previous approved building that was already there. Um, the use is the same, the building's the same, in most instances, we wouldn't even bother with this stuff because they're not changing anything. Um, adult use marijuana is a little bit different, but, uh, we didn't have any, any significant concerns with what they were proposing or anything like that. Um, so we had, you know, subject to everything else being figured out, we had suggested approval of it. Now, I think at the end of our memo, we had a couple of, um, things that um, could be discussed, so, uh, any changes in signage, any changes in outdoor lighting, waste disposal, um, and then building materials, which he's, he's just addressed, I don't have any problem with them changing the exterior of the building or the siding. Um, if they want to do something different, that's fine, they may have to get a building permit, but I'm not even sure that they would need to do that. Um, but it's worth checking in with IMS to see if they need a, 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 a building permit for it, but from our perspective, they wouldn't have to do anything else. We're primarily focused on, you know, the, the building itself, the layout, parking, land use, and all of those things are not changing from what was there previously, so. We did include a draft motion recommending approval, or that would approve it, um, if you chose to adopt that with some conditions. Most of them are, are pretty standard, it, it's, it's, it's a little long, but we're also, um, in the conditions of approval, this is on page nine of my report from July.
Seven, for those of us looking in our packet.
So there's and there's the first two, uh, conditions of approval would be they, they get their permits. Um, they operate the facility in performance with the, with the Michigan, uh, regulation and taxation marijuana act. Number three basically incorporates all of their representations that they've made in writing with their submittals, so, uh, the answers to the special land use questions, the order control plan, the hazardous chemicals, the ADA elimination, all, all that stuff is sort of memorialized in this, so if they deviate from what they're representing here, obviously that could be some kind of potential issue, but, you know, we don't have any reason to believe they would do that. Um, number four, signing and signage and lighting would meet the requirements of the zoning ordinance. Five, if there's any additional concerns or requirements from the fire department or the engineer, the attorney, I don't know what they would be, but hypothetically, if there was some, something that came up, they'd have to comply with. Then five just gives the city, uh, just notes that the city may exercise all available enforcement remedies, remedies upon finding that there is a violation, because this is a special land use permit. Um, the city does have the power to suspend or revoke special land use permits, um, if there is a violation, and, um, you know, again, we haven't seen that, but it's something that we often put in the conditions of approval for stuff like this, just so it's, it's clear and everyone knows kind of where we're at, so, again, we don't have any, any other ma- major concerns, we recommend that approval of it. Um, if there's any other, I guess, comments or questions, I'd be happy to answer them at this time, but.
The application is on process, does the condition one cover that, like, we approved as is? The application that was just canceled but is not approved yet, does that cover that condition if we?
Yeah, I, I think so, I mean, so.
I just wanted to make sure we clarified before we made a motion.
Yeah, so that would include, and, and mostly this, this, that last sentence there that says this includes any necessary permits granted by the city of Cedar Springs, that's really what we're getting at, is, is the municipal license is the major potential sticking point there, and they've set aside that.
Any other questions or comments?
Take the motion to, if you want to approve the suggested wins and works as the motion?
Or do I need to read you the whole thing?
That's up to the clerk, as long as you're happy with taking the
presented in most.
Presented, right, there we go, perfect.
Second?
Yeah.
Uh, any discussion? Well, hearing none, all in favor of approval, we see it by that?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries. Um, and I want to make sure that the, that the applicant representative there got his question answered regarding, um, the siding, because we kind of blew past that, so. But, but, did you get everything that you needed, sir, that's what I was?
I, I, as far as the siding goes, I believe I did, I'll contact IMS and find out and follow up with them. Um, it did, I do have two follow-up questions very briefly, if you wouldn't mind indulging me, so the first was about the signage. Um, if my client decided just to swap out the signs, same dimensions, no illumination, just changing the names on them, would that require anything more formal than the permissions that you seem to um, that you seem to have extended this evening?
You'd have to do an application for a sign permit with the city.
Everything's the same right now.
I'm sorry, you broke up, I do apologize.
To, to pull a sign permit.
Okay. Um, and then the final question was, I noticed that, um, within ten days of approval, special land use approval, the additional two thousand dollar application fee is due. Um, will there be anything formally sent out by way of an invoice, or should my client just present a check to the city within ten days of this evening?
Typically do not send out invoices. I can, if you would like one, but.
No, just wanted to double check, so I'll, I'll arrange for them to remit the, uh, I think there were the additional two thousand to make the full five thousand application fee, and those were all my questions, thank you very much.
Always nice to
Yes.
Work with something that's all well put together. Okay, moving on to other business. Um, item ten A, discuss, uh, I'm getting feedback from something. Maybe I'm too close to your mic. Um, discuss joint meeting with stolen township planning commission. So, what's up with that?
Fail from, um, Mr. Elick, the stolen township supervisor, because we have a joint four twenty-five agreement with stolen township. Um, annually, we're supposed to be meeting with stolen townships planning commission. And I, I understand it hasn't happened in the last seven years, don't know why, but, um, ever, oh. The, um, so I know we meet on Tuesday nights, stolen township planning, planning commission meetings are the fourth Wednesday monthly. Or would you, I would like to meet with them, just to have, you know, a general discussion, I think that would be helpful, but it's up to you. Request them to come here on a regular Tuesday night.
Come to our meeting, that would be great, have a joint.
Um, hasn't recorded, or is that just something where it's a discussion?
It would be a special meeting, it would be a special meeting of the city council, and the council policies that these meetings are recorded.
If we have it on our night, then that would disrupt any planning things we needed to do, so maybe take of both parties, pick a neutral date where we can all meet. That's here, or here preferably. I don't know how big their room is out there.
I don't know either.
I don't think it's that large, but still. I'd be receptive to another meeting, that's all we can do, really.
Or Wednesday, or Tuesday.
Verbal Wednesdays are difficult for me, yeah, but I can make it happen, but it, it's just, like I said, it's much more difficult for me to get free on a Wednesday night.
Pretty much the same, I've built my life around keeping Tuesdays free, so. Not that I have such a busy life, but.
Any Tuesdays out of the question? Anytime between now and?
Eight on Tuesday, I have, uh.
That'd be October seventeenth, uh, if you want me present, I mean, not that I'm the B L N O, but I'm going for a conference that week.
Second, yeah, the, you know, the following third week in October would be fine, third or fourth, you know.
And as a special meeting, we don't have to have too long of a notice on this, right, that's not a wanting to make sure that we were.
Okay, I can coordinate with their, um, representatives on, give them a couple dates, options, request it be here.
I'll be gone on the thirty-first.
Oh, yeah, Halloween would be a bad time to do that.
Go on, I'll actually be in Florida, but that's okay.
It's pre-rut, so we got to schedule around that.
Halloween, that was.
Like I said, I don't care about Halloween, that's pre-rut.
The twenty-fourth then. Anybody else conflicted on the twenty-fourth?
Oh, which month?
October, a few weeks away.
No, it's a week prior than I'm busy, about a time.
No, that's before. Happened in November, so it's.
Hasn't happened for twenty years, so I think we should get it in as soon as we can, this is reasonable, but but, and then we should probably, if, if we were all unaware, I believe, that that was a requirement of the four twenty-five agreement, will, from this point on, we will definitely adhere to it. But
Yes.
We, we will get it when it's mutually agreeable to all parties.
We'll start with.
Twenty twenty-four, one on our calendar too, at that time.
Okay, then, um, speaking of that, let's move on to the twenty twenty-four proposed calendar, that's the next on the agenda.
I think we set the dates and if we can't make it, that's kind of a.
Yeah, I think, well, I mean, in general, we do, unless we see something that's just obvious, that is going to be a problem. And I, from what I saw, it looked like very miked tonight, I, I'm very loud.
I'll go in here, so.
Back maybe a little?
With your voting?
That are going to conflict with twenty twenty-four elections, and you'll see those after. Because of that, um.
And, you know, we, we'll do what we got to do, I think.
Good day, that doesn't interfere with my.
Here that we think is just a sore thumb sticking out that we should work around, otherwise we'll just work around day to day.
I will miss the first one, but that'll be up, that's the only one that shows a conflict with, so.
You go ahead.
I have no light, so, yeah.
But I can always zoom in from Florida too.
Yeah, um, you can zoom in as long as you don't vote, is that how it works at this point? Yeah, so that's cool. Okay, so any problems then with this, or do you need more time to look it over?
The only thing I would know is some of these dates may, the nine days of early voting, so your room may be a little bit reconfigured, but I don't think it'll be a problem. Uh, we should be able to make it look as close to possible, um, before that meeting time, so.
Have the nineties of early voting before each of these election days, so that's quite a bit of time, isn't it?
Okay.
Okay, so it's not so burdensome on staff here, we can come. Not a big deal. It is far more important.
I mean, if, is that basically reflect the least burdensome days from what, from what you could see?
Yes, yeah, the biggest thing I had mentioned to Darla was that the March meeting, um, potential February meeting. We don't know when the presidential primary is going to land yet, they haven't decided that date yet, so that may impact those meeting dates just a little, and I think the best solution for us was to schedule them where we think that they're going to be, and if they need to be changed, we'll cancel and call a special meeting. There's just no good way to.
All you can do.
No way to get around it.
Are we good then to vote on this? We have to vote to accept it, right?
If are ready to go back now, otherwise we can bring it back for next month.
Yeah.
Take the motion then.
To approve it. I'll make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-four calendar.
I'll second, or Jerry.
Do we need, uh, hold on, do we, I forgot to see, do we need to change the resolution number on it, it says twenty twenty-three dash one? Is that, I don't know if that was important.
Twenty-three.
Is that, okay, I just want to make sure that wasn't a twenty.
People, we need more resolution.
Yeah.
So.
All right, so I'll make a motion to.
And then, and then we still have a second from one of you two.
Yeah.
Whoever, they came at the same time. Mr. Nixon, how about that?
Okay, I remember, right.
There's a session? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? We have a calendar. Moving on, um, the box signs. We have a lot of reading material here, Mr. Moore, that you provided us from, uh, four different municipalities.
That's at the last meeting, you asked for some examples from communities around you, and so that's what you got.
Right.
Um, so, yeah, so the, the, so this is, is presented here as information, you know, oh, it's, a lot of communities like to see what some of their neighbors are doing in terms. Um, I'm not super familiar with all of them, but I'm familiar with some of them, I'm most familiar with Loles, because we, uh, wrote it, and then we wrote it recently. Uh, we've also worked with, with Dreambuild. Uh, we've also worked with, with Greenbills some. Um, yeah, one of the things that those guys talking about signs a while back that makes you guys unique is that most, um, of my, I think all of my clients don't regulate them like box signs, for example, or panel signs and some of these things that are visual. Uh, we don't. I don't know of anyone who does that to that level of, of detail. So a lot of this discussion to me centers around kind of what's your comfort level. So you don't have to do anything. You have an ordinance in place now. It works okay for the most part. You don't allow those, those internally illuminated oxy signs. If you want to continue that practice, that is absolutely fine. Um, if you want to you know, further regulate signage in terms of, um, how they're illuminated, or if you, if you're using channel cut lettering, like we had talked about that a little bit, some of the newer signs, particularly some of the ones in the, uh, in that strip mall at the corner. Um, they have those channel cut letters, so if because the concern was with box signs, if somebody moves out, someone just buys a new plastic panel, slaps it in there and you're good to go, and the same you know, perhaps unappealing sign stays there for ever and ever and ever and ever, whereas if they're channel cut signs, the whole thing has to come out. It's easier to get compliance that way because you someone comes in with a new sign, you can get them to go smaller or make any changes, whereas those boxes tend to stick around for a longer term. Um, but it's but hand, it's really kind of up to you in terms of just what your sort of appetite is for regulating. Want to take things. I didn't say farther, but if you want to make any changes or, you know, look further into regulating materials. Um, one of the things that, uh, Mr. Womack had talked about was, you know, he had expressed some concerns about those. There were some signs on Main Street here where it's, it's just a simple plastic sign that's just sort of screwed into the wall. Some of those, I think, you know, we might run into sort of issues figuring out how to distinguish between the two, or sort of if we can, like, if we can make a distinct, a distinction in, in regulate. You know, plastic sign versus a metal sign versus a wood sign. A little hesitant on those things because if you get challenged, you're gonna say, well, you know, what's the basis for your regulation? And I don't know that, well, we think this looks kind of crummy or whatever, that might not be a good enough reason for regulating something like that, especially when we're talking about signage. Um, so a lot of this is, is to sort of ask you sort of what you're comfortable with. Um, some of the examples here, so like, I know off the top of my head in, in Lowell, they're pretty restrictive with signage. Um, everywhere in their city, even out by the, like on Bolton Street, sort of on the west side of town. They only allow a freestanding sign to be fifty square feet. They, they allow a wall mounted sign to be fifty square feet. Uh, which is smaller than what a lot of communities regulate. Um, in their downtown, they only allow wall signs and, and projecting signs. Um, there, we've never dealt with those box signs, because I don't think anyone has ever even asked for one there. So some of it is just that because you have, and I think that strip mall is probably the most was aren't typically zoned in the same district as the rest of your historic downtown. So you kind of have a different set of challenges with trying to fit that in with what you do. Looking at the cities that sign ordinance, I think one of the things that a little bit cumbersome is that you have your sort of your highway commercial and your downtown and your other commercial districts all sort of lumped into same chapter, and so you're trying to do a lot of things in one section, and it might make it a little confusing, but, um, again, these are sort of broad suggestions. We could certainly look to propose some changes to you, but, um, I also am not sure sort of what your, what your appetite is as a planning commission for regular. Don't have to do anything. Want to do more, you can do more if we as we get more used to this over the, you know, over the coming months and years, if we identify clear problems where we say, okay, this is completely confusing and it's repeating, causing issues, we can bring you an amendment. I guess from there, I'll turn over to Chairman if you have any questions or there's any comments on that.
Your next question, I'll go to you after that, Mr. Hall.
So, ah, the biggest thing like with box signs, I think, you know what? We could just leave it alone. If we were able to differentiate for Ms. Darla to be able to go in and be able to regulate that they fix up or paint the structure, you know what I mean, around the, what, what is holding the plastic, right? Because that's what looks bad a lot of times is because you've had businesses that just throw in another piece of plastic. Now they're not taking care of the actual structure. So then if we have something where Ms. Darla could be able to go in and say, no, 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 no. You gotta paint that or add another piece of metal or a piece of wood. Um, I do agree with Mr. Womack with, uh, like banners. Those shouldn't be allowed. But with the panel sign, we had discussed about putting like a wooden border around it. I don't know that that would be too bad, and is there a way that we could just say, hey, if you're putting a panel sign up, can you just take some one by two or something, stain it and you know? It would give it some depth and it would actually make it kind of look off the building versus just flat on flat and then.
Yeah, you could, I suppose, try to require some kind of framing around them. Um, again, the challenge is going to be how do we phrase that in a way that you get what you want? And you can also defend it. So when someone says, why are you doing that?
Something durable.
Reason behind it, because if someone, yeah, someone could put some uh, and I guess where I'm coming from is that we can a situation where somebody say, okay, we'll, we'll put a frame around it and they'll put a frame around it, but and, and they'll stain it, and maybe they won't do a very good job of seeing it, or they won't do a very good job of putting it together, then it kind of falls apart, or it starts to expand or do whatever, and then we're sort of right back to where we started with something that doesn't look great. We do have standards that require, you know, the signs to be maintained and kept in good repair and things like that, but we get into some gray areas on those things and. See, this is falling in, in, into dis. It's fine, or here is how it's held together, and it's definitely not going to fall apart, and it's just, this is just the normal weathering. And I don't, I'm not trying to argue with you, but I'm just kind of thinking.
Unless you have a follow-up, it's, you had a question, you wanted to be recognized earlier.
Here we go again on the box signs. I remember being on the planning commission way when we discussed this. And we got a lot of input from the merchants. And they didn't, they, they wanted them, they, they liked them. And this is where we've been and and, uh, now all of a sudden they're wrong and bad, so. You know, it's worked for a long time, and this ordinance can be amended as we see a problem. So I'm for leave it alone.
Right now, box signs are pivoted in the downtown. The downtown.
Been here.
So they're here, and if they fall apart, then they wouldn't be able to get put back up, or if somebody takes one down and wants to replace it, they can't replace it with. You're gonna have these not for a week. Probably for a really long. But we have to allow people to swap out those panels.
Then I have something I want to say after that.
I, I mean, well, myself. Oh, I mean, the businesses that are on Main Street, I feel like they're handicapped by not having a good sign. You look at the pit, pitchers, and they got those flap handles, there's no lighting. Nothing makes your business stick out. You go up to the strip malls and see the lighted ladder signs. It draws people's eyes to a building. I don't know why we'd want to handicap our Main Street businesses from not having good signage. I mean, just because we don't want to discuss box signs. I mean, I think they all deserve to be able to have a good sign. These flat signs that are nailed to the sides of the buildings. If you ask me, they look like crap. They can't have a good sign.
Well, are we disallowing them from putting up the type of signs that are?
Box signs are. Not allowed on downtown. So the box signs are, so yeah, the, those, those metal signs that are the box with the plastic thing on the outside that are in, that are internally illuminated, those are not allowed downtown. There are a ton of other types of signs they could have. It will look great. Yeah. That would not be box signs, right? I mean, there's nothing that would prevent people from having a, a detecting sign, or having a nicer looking panel sign with some external illumination coming out over the top of it. There's lots of things that businesses can do, um, outside of just that one type of sign, but I mean, you're right, if you want to make life easier for those businesses, that being more liberal in what you're allowing for signage is potentially one way to do it. Um, a lot of downtown businesses are afforded additional types of signs, whether they're window signs, sandwich boards, projecting signs, wall signs, marquees. And different types of things because we recognize that. If you don't. As a business, it's sort of packed in a little bit more tightly, it's easier to miss them. Um, because they're subject to some other additional regulations. They have to be smaller usually, or more strict on lighting, et cetera. Um, it's different from here, I wear. Well, like even even the Cedar Springs Brewery shop that's no longer in business there, I mean, is that not a lighted box sign? Four years old?
But when you're talking about these panel signs, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
You're also talking about money, and that's where these panel signs come in, and I know which one we're talking about, probably the same one, um, which it is a newer one, and, uh, you know, money comes into play because, uh, Mr. Moore did discuss that. That the projected signs, the cut letter signs, they do cost more money. And, but we do want businesses in the downtown area. That's why I was like, you know, if they can't afford, you know, uh, even a box sign, and they can afford the flat sign. Putting a border around it would draw your eye. Do you think, I mean, I'm looking, I'm asking you.
They're dressed up a bit. I just think they should have more options, like the cut ladder signs, those are great signs. And it does get to your point to where if that business closes, the next business has got to replace it. It just seems like the sign ordinance is pretty strict for the downtown, correct? Yes and no. I mean, the box sign thing is unique. I don't know that any, I can think of any other clients that even identify a box sign as a specific sign site. So normally the box signs or a panel sign, they're all just wall signs. Any type of sign that you mount to the outside of your building, it's just called a wall sign. And then made between whether it's a box, or whether they're channel cut letters, or whether it's a piece of plywood with spray paint on it or whatever, like it's all just a wall sign, right? Um, so that part of your ordinance is different from what I've seen in most. Uh, so if you wanted to be more flexible, then you could back off on the box sign restriction and just allow for wall signs, projecting signs, window signs, usual, and then we'll put a size parameter on it, but then let them kind of determine and line and the illumination and everything else. I think some of the, some of the concern, you know, years ago, and some of what Mr. Womack was talking about is by doing that, you also you know, will likely end up with something that looks or something that doesn't look, you know, looks a little doesn't look as durable, it doesn't look as, um, sturdy. That's a concern that he had. Um, and, you know. But at the same time, there are signs right now that can go up that are going to look that way, so I'm not sure how effective that is either. One could argue looks a little particularly sturdy and robust.
So I want to kind of point out the not the elephant in the room, but, but the reality that this entire discussion started at the behest of Mr. Womack. This was his idea, and he had some, I believe, some legitimate concerns that he brought it, brought to the table. At the same time, I want what we do to help our current manager more than I wanted to help our prior managers. Hear your opinion on, um, on are you having, or are you envisioning any trouble enforcing what you have? And if so, what changes would you make to make your life easier?
I, I do like easy, and I I, I've tackled quite a few, um, sign requests actually, and you know, kind of looked through what I thought and, you know, pass it on to Mr. Moore. Am I thinking this right? Is it allowed, not allowed? Um, it, it is cumbersome. I'll, I'll give you that. Buy it. I would be in favor.
So back to one of your first thoughts. Would it be uh, congruent of us to kind of take this apart and delve it into three sections as in commercial B three and historic downtown?
Um, I think it would be helpful to separate out your downtown district. I don't know that that is much, it's B three or, um. Yeah, and, and you'll see in a couple of those ordinances, um, have a table. So like in Lowell, there's, it says like in, in your residential zones here, the signs permitted, it'll say this and this. Or this, or this, and then it'll be a table that says the sign type, area, height, illumination, and some other things. Um, so we can look at something like that, and I think for the downtown, that's really what this whole conversation is about, is the signage downtown. We might be able to say with more specificity, if you broke out that in a new section and said in the downtown, here are your standards. Wall sign, projecting sign. Going on and so forth, subject to these requirements, box sign, no box sign, you can cross your vision and get to it. You know, internal illumination only versus external, some of that kind of stuff. That might help because right now it's a little confusing because in your downtown, you could have a ground sign out front, which for a lot of these businesses, it makes no sense because they're built right out to the sidewalk. Not all of them, but most of them um, are, and so monument sign, if you look in that chapter, it allows for monument signs and pole signs and other stuff that you just typically don't need or wouldn't want in your downtown for the most part. So we can look at some of those, um, as kind of maybe a way to help clean it up and your downtown isn't. Downtown zoning district is, is a little different because not every single property is right up to the sidewalk, and every property is the typical Main Street, zero lot line type of thing, like we have in some of those other cities that are regulated in here, so some of that's going to be a little bit different, um, but they're pretty, there's not many of it, really a couple, so I think most of it we can handle. So that could be a way to at least simplify the downtown part of it for sure. That might help. Help you guys kind of wrap your arms around what you're doing with the downtown and help the manager and by extension myself kind of have ease of administration. And when the public looks at it, they, you know, if, if you're a business, you can say, okay, zone B two, you just open it up and that's what I can do, and you don't have to try to parse through. If you're B three, you can do this, but if you're B one, you can do that, but if you're B three adjacent to a B one, then, you know, and also there get rid of some of those conditional types of things.
I, I like that idea.
Probably a new concept or whatever. You know, we make these ordinances and stuff, and ultimately the impact of businesses and our manager and zoning also have to deal with it. Like just have our zoning events there and manager have a lot of input on what are these signs we're gonna do? Because ultimately. What are these signs we're gonna do? Cause ultimately. They have to enforce it.
I don't think I would be speaking out of turn, based on. Looking and listening to what's up here. If you. Made the ordinance that you liked. That would work for a reasonable, you know what this town is, you've been here a while. That works for the town that we have. In conjunction with with the help that Mr. Moore has. And you brought it to us, we're probably gonna say yes. Just because we want it to be streamlined and and to work for it, but I can't actually speak for everyone, but I'm just kind of trying to put that out there. Because honestly, the back and forth with us as a committee. Is gonna get in the weeds really fast, or we're gonna spend hours on this. We're happy to to help you with that, but I also don't want to burden the process.
Just be nice to have better than just a piece of aluminum nailed to the side of a building with vinyl graphics on it. That's. I mean, that's not what beautifies the downtown. And that's what half of them are now.
Ms. Darla, no banners. Do it, I can't.
Full board is to allow them to come up with something.
I know, but I'm giving her a pointer.
I don't think she'll have a problem with that.
Allow banners as a temporary thing that you can have for thirty days.
Yes, yes, I know it says, but.
I know Ms. Darla knows this, that they will still try to. Ooh, let me just slide under.
Probably the single most difficult topic of zoning that we. Possible to get them a hundred percent. Right, it works. Pretty close, but.
What they should be. Um, so you know what, let's let's not. Let's not have perfect be the enemy of good enough at this point. We'll try for good enough. Obviously, we have some just some problems at the moment. And then we'll see how it works.
American Legion the next door, their sign was broken. And they wanted to repair the digital part of the sign, sign company came here. And that sign is not. Not allowed, even though it was allowed to be put there.
I was on a planning commission then, and it was. A long gone out deal and they were approved.
It was, but now it's. Not approved. So they could repair, not replace. They would like to take, I think they got plans to take that brick area out. And the club manager would love to have a monument sign, not something up on a pole. And like as of right now, that wouldn't meet, they won't even be allowed to do that.
I thought he just said monument signs were.
Allowed so far.
But that's what Mr. Moore said.
Thought I'd read that earlier.
Enough for them to decide. We're out of it.
Okay. Appreciate it. Is it, and there's okay, if I move on to uh correspondence, open discussion not on the agenda. For issues not on the agenda, correspondence, uh, we have the twenty twenty-three calendar, that's what we have every month, right? Just letting us know what's coming. Um, and then we have a variety of upcoming projects that I believe is just a placeholder for. Things that could be coming. Is there anything? Any? Motion on any of those that we need to know about?
Motion, but I I would like to point out, so at six o'clock tonight, before this meeting, we did meet with the owner of twenty-eight South Main, she's letter B here. Um, kind of asked her what her timeline was. Looking like. Middle of twenty twenty-four. Um, but I did. Feel the phone call this morning um, from a. Person that she reached out to to demolish the existing building. So she made demolish it. Maybe grass it, you know, put grassy down and then. But we told her, once you come here and get approval, you better be ready to go, you know, yeah.
Twenty-eight South Main.
Yes.
That wants to do like the.
Three story convert on the main floor, two apartments on the second floor and. Two apartments on the on the third floor. High end apartments.
Interesting. Better than the old roundup.
Great, good news.
Then uh, item A three, uh, legal nonconforming, assuming these are two more. Um. Of those that we documented. Through this meeting, it's in the pla- it's in the packet. And um, zoning board of appeals, item four.
We had that special meeting and those two were approved.
Okay. Uh, staff comments then, uh, city manager.
Um. Three thirty-three South Main. Talked about that before, right across from Great Lakes Landscape. Great Lakes Landscape bought it. Um, I've met with that gentleman a couple of times and everything he comes back to the table with. We, I tell him, whatever you put there, it has to be its own business, it can't be. A subsidy of your Great Lakes Landscape business, and he. Kind of struggling with what to put there, he wants to extend his business over there, and I said that, it's not allowed, I'm sorry. So finally I called him a couple of weeks ago and I said. Have a proposal for you, he said, what's that? I said. Would you consider selling that lot to the city? And the reason I said that is. We're working with an engineering company to basically redesign Morley Park. Maybe you take off that brad in the middle, have it a a more pedestrian path with more connections, sidewalk connections to play areas. Maybe another pavilion in there. And anything we put in there is going to require more parking. So. Me, it would just make sense if we could secure that piece, make it more a formal parking with. Stairs going, because it's kind of a steep.
Yeah, that could be lowered down.
Are planning for that whole area. They mentioned like. Six or eight pickleball courts could fit in. South of the scout cabin. You know, that's a wet area, but you can fill that in and make. Extend our park bigger there, so. He said he was gonna talk to his partner and let me know, I just thought I. Highest and best use of land. And I, to me, that's just makes sense if the city owned that.
Expand that park instead of building new parks.
Yes, that is a very well-used park.
Hate to ask this question, but is there any issue with the um? Any contamination from the gas station?
Where the parking lot is, is contaminated.
The parking lot, we're basically capping it.
With a sealed parking lot.
There's, there there's a lot of problem there. They actually put the new tanks in. To the north of that site. And uh. They were above ground tanks and they were pulled, that's where you see the big mound out there where even that probably could be uh. Grated out, lessen the steepness or however. But that was still put in there specifically to bring the grade up because of the tanks.
Cause the instinct you said, well, that could be leveled out, so I'm like, are they gonna send to a contaminated zone? I don't want to do that, so. I wasn't sure, but I'll let, I'll let that be.
Yes.
Grades still cap it. As long as the water isn't infiltrating down, they could cut it, haul out the waste, cap it. Cause it is a high rate there.
Good deal.
Um, that was.
Nothing back. From the Vanderheide Ford, yeah?
Um, no, I reached out to everybody that uh, family farm and home Vanderheide Ford, they're still in the planning stages, they're working on it, so um. Till they give us the necessary paperwork, we can't bring it back to you.
Wanted to move overnight.
Uh, city clerk comments?
Um, the one thing that I would mention is that your next planning commission meeting in November. Second Tuesday because of that election.
Good thing I'm not a deer hunter anymore. Eighty-four opener.
We don't have anybody here, they'd be all going to their camp.
I might be here. The uh, okay, so then planning commission members, any comments? I thought you were saying you have two comments. Uh, I I have nothing, so let's move on. Um, planning consultant.
I have nothing further to add, thank you.
Well, in that case, we're adjourned.